Okay, at this time, we would like to welcome everyone to the McDowell County Board of Commissioners Monthly Meeting. The meeting is called the Order, and we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So we'd like to ask everyone to please stand at this time, and Commissioner Allison Luiz in our prayer, and then Commissioner Patrick Ellis will lead us into pledge.
Dear God, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and ask you just to lead, guide, and direct in every decision that we have to make for our county. And we just ask that you continue to bless McDowell County and see it successful, and ask you just to keep that hedge of protection, to keep McDowell County safe as we go through this COVID crisis. In Jesus' name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. You may be seated. Okay, Commissioners, you have before you the minutes, and we have the November 9th Regular Session and the November 16th Regular Session. What's the approval of the Board concerning the minutes?
I think the motion that we approve as they are.
Okay, motion approved. You have a second.
Sir.
All right, discussion. All in favor say aye, and opposed, last side. We have tonight, our agenda before us, at this time, West staff. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda from staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, do you all have any additions or deletions? There being that, what's the pleasure of the Board concerning approving tonight's agenda?
No, we approve.
Okay, motion. Second, discussion. All in favor say aye, and opposed, last side. Okay? Now, we're going to move to our first appointment item, but before we do that, I want to welcome our two new Board members. And we have serving Chris Allison, and Chris, we're so glad to have you on the Board, and we have Patrick Ellis. Patrick, we're so glad to have you here. And I want, for the record, so this can be entered into the minutes, we've got a really unique situation with Patrick Ellis. His father, I think, was actually Chairman of the Board of Commissioners at one point, wasn't he?
I can't, I was young, but I can remember him being older.
He served how many terms, Patrick? Two?
Uh, one.
One. So this is really unique in the history of McDowell County. This is a first, to have a father serve on the Board of Commissioners back in the eighties, I guess, what, in the Patrick's seventies?
Seventies.
And then today, we have Patrick, his son, serving. So that is something that really is unique to McDowell County, and so, Patrick, we're glad to have you serve. With that being said, I'll turn the meeting over to our clerk to the Board, and after an election, the first Monday, we move the meeting over to the way to select Chair or Vice Chair. So I'll turn the meeting over to Madam Clerk for nominations.
Thank you. Commissioners, now I will take a nomination for Chairman.
I nominate Tony Brown Chairman.
Is there a second? Are there any more nominations?
I move to be closed.
I need a second.
I'll make the second.
There are no other nominations. I have a vote. May I have the vote for Tony Brown as Chairman? By saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It was unanimous for Tony Brown. I'll now take nominations for Vice Chairman.
I nominate David Walker.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
There are no other nominations. We'll now take a vote for David Walker as Vice Chairman. If you have a second.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Chairman Brown, turn it back over to you.
That was a surprise. Okay, moving along, item B under appointments, recognition of elected officials. Kim Welborn, you'll have the floor to start that off, if you will.
Well, you guys invited us, so I brought with me Jane Probst, who is the Deputy Director. Of course, we have Dean Buss, who is our Chair, and I'll let him do most of the talking, but Karen Burrell, who is our Election Assistant, and Tom Klein, who is another Board Member, so.
Well, I don't know what to say. It's a, we had a great election.
Dean.
Biggest election that the county's ever had. Is there a microphone where?
Oh, it's here, let me try here.
Tableau members, glad to honor these young ladies that worked for us. They had an awesome task this year. Not only did they fight COVID, but Kim's mother died, they both had COVID. We had to rearrange everything we did as far as election process, and to tell you the truth, I just don't know how to did it. But it's remarkable what you can do when given the chance. The Board members gave us a nice building to work out of, and I'll never forget that. Can you just imagine, David, being with Social Service and Board of Elections and all up in that one staircase, at the top of the courthouse, and we just, now, you know, things with this, you couldn't have made it. You couldn't have made it with today's time. But our Director, Kim, has been with us 25 years, and Jane come on about five years ago, and we've got Karen, and they're wonderful people. You know, to have a good staff makes it easy to be a Board Member. Tom Klein is here tonight, and Tom agreed with me that it's wonderful to have people work together and do what's right, and be honest and do it. Elections sometimes just get so ugly, but in our case, it's a dream to be able to work with good people, good staff, and other Board members that are on our Board. And thank you for honoring those young ladies tonight. I appreciate it.
You know, I'd like to say that, and I think I speak on behalf of the whole Board, we certainly appreciate all the hard work that you guys do. We know that you worked countless hours and what went on behind the scenes, you know, and work that we don't know and we don't see. We appreciate all of that, Kim. And who else do you have with you? You have Tom, Tom Klein?
Tom Klein, and Jane, and Karen.
Okay, okay. Well, we appreciate you guys being here. Is that all that you have with you?
Yeah. The other Board members couldn't make it. We just thank you all for your support and just everything you all have done to, like Dean said, for the building, and it takes a village, and we appreciate all your help and your support. Maybe we couldn't have done it without you guys.
Well, we certainly appreciate all that you guys do. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a resolution of appreciation. Can read a copy of that?
Yes.
Or invite a Board member to you.
Would you care to read this, Dave?
McDowell County Resolution of Appreciation for McDowell County Board of Elections. Whereas the United States, the state of North Carolina, and McDowell County held a general election on November 3rd, 2020, and whereas the 2020 general election ballot had United States President, United States Senator, United States House of Representatives, as well as numerous state and local races of great importance. And whereas the high interest of the races on the ballot resulted in a turnout of 77.21% in McDowell County. And whereas the nation, state, and county had experienced the COVID-19 pandemic since March 2020, and whereas the Board of Elections staff provided registration services throughout the summer and fall during the pandemic, and whereas the Board of Elections staff and poll workers operated early voting sites in Marion and Olaford during late October with precautions in place, and whereas all precincts were open on November 3rd and handled the record turnout with great professionalism. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the McDowell County Board of Elections for an excellent, and I'll underline and underscore that excellent, 2020 general election adopted this, the seventh day of December 2020. And I want to add to you, thank you, ladies, for all you all done, just tremendous, the turnout and your response to it, and here again, another election with no errors. You do great. And also to your Board Directors, Dean, and you guys, and women, you all do a great job too. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from any other Board members? What's the pleasure of the Board on the motion for accept the resolution?
I say aye.
Say aye.
Motion is said. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Jane, for coming. Moving to item C under appointments, we'll hear an update, COVID-19 update from Karen Powell. Please.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate it. Excited to be able to give you an update just about a couple of things that are going on within COVID, and our response to that, as well as the upcoming vaccine, which everybody's anxious to hear about. So I want to give a little bit of information about that, too. So today, we are Public Health, along with the Emergency Operations Center, on date 267 in response to COVID-19. We reported out today, if you read the press release, 123 new positives today in McDowell County, which is our highest number that we've reported since the beginning of the pandemic, along with one death. We have 2,067 current positive test results in the county. We've conducted 25,698 tests. 23,423 of those were negative. We have 208 pending tests. We have 347 people in quarantine, 1,679 out and recovered, with a total of 41 deaths today. We did tests at the Health Department today. We do that on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Those response to testing continue to be high. We do between 250 and 300 at every drive-through. William's team from Emergency Operations does the testing for us at the Health Department, and that's just been unbelievably great help to us, so that the nurses in Public Health can concentrate on contact tracing and calling positives and get everybody isolated and quarantined at home. So we know that we continue to push out through social media and all those outlets about wearing a mask and washing your hands and social distancing, and so we do that every day. We're on calls every day with local leaders pushing those messages and really trying to get the community to come together to make sure that we continue to do that, so we can get those numbers down. The Governor will release a new map tomorrow for the county alert system that he's put out, where he updates the colors. I do know that McDowell County will stay in orange. They will not move to red this time, but I suspect if our numbers stay like this, we'll probably go to the red in his next update. So we'll see what else he has to say tomorrow when he updates that map. So just one thing to watch with that. We do know that the more numbers William reported out today on the data, that we're almost at 15% rolling 14-day positivity rate, and that's the highest we've been. So that's pretty high, and that's what the Governor's watching for in counties, to see when you move over into that red. So if we stay that way, I suspect it'll be pretty quick. And then I think he'll base his restrictions on those colors. So we'll see how that plays out tomorrow in his press release. So I just encourage you to really help us with that message about getting it out, so that we can, we're seeing most of our transmission within mass gatherings, groups of families that get together, and then just general community spread, and it's everywhere. It's in all of our departments, it's in the community, it's in stores, it's everywhere. And so we just have to really be careful about social distancing and make sure that we're wearing that mask. So what we know about the vaccine is that the Pfizer vaccine, which is the one you probably heard about on the news, that has to be ultra-cold and stay in those ultra-cold freezers, is going to be released the week of the 14th of December. That will go out to hospitals that have the capability to house that vaccine at that ultra-cold temperature. The only one in western North Carolina is Part D in Hendersonville, so they'll get that first, they'll get that first shipment from Pfizer, and then they'll distribute it out to the other hospitals in western North Carolina. So they'll get the huge system shipped, and then they'll ship it out to the hospitals. So the hospitals will get that first shipment, they'll get the first release for patients and staff inside the hospitals. So then we'll get the second release, which is the Moderna vaccine, that will probably be the week of the 21st. And they have that prioritized for phases for us, so we'll get that first shipment out, and then we'll distribute that to high priority lists, which is people that come in contact that care for people with COVID, transport people with COVID, people that didn't deal with deceased COVID. There's a list of those things, what that Phase 1 priority list looks like. So William and I met today for quite some time to figure out how we'll distribute that out when it first comes out. We'll probably get around 900 to 1,000 doses in that first, in that first shipment. So we'll work together with our teams to get that out. Then there'll be Phase 1B, and we'll work to figure out who gets that next, and then there's a Phase 2 and a Phase 3. And so we'll just continue to get those shipments and then try to get everybody vaccinated. But we do have a plan to run that through the Health Department to those different groups, and we'll get everybody vaccinated as we get those shipments in, that one's that. So that's sort of what that looks like. That's what we know right now. That's what we know. They'll be shipping to us, how that will come, and how we'll store it. We, it's normal standard vaccine storage for us, so we already have the capabilities. It's just like flu or any other shot that we would store at the Health Department. So we'll be able to store that when the shipment comes in.
Is Part D part of the Mission Group?
No, they're part of, in the list that I saw, it's called Henderson Healthcare Management Group. So I don't know who, I don't.
I think they're affiliated with UNC.
That's right. There's only one, what's the other one in Hendersonville? It's still privately owned, but.
Yes, Athens.
Right, and so, yeah, so I think you're right. I think it is UNC.
That surprises me that Mission.
Doesn't have it.
Has not set up to store this, this one. Any questions or comments from staff?
Yeah, I've got one. So we're hearing in general COVID, older people are, a lot of them are ready and saying, we want the vaccine. So you said, you and William would determine who we get. Does the CDC have guidelines on?
We don't determine. We don't determine. We've already gotten a priority list from the state on what that looks like. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So who would, who would get that in here?
Okay.
Who would, who would that get to first? What group?
Okay.
Healthcare workers?
Right. So the first Phase 1A that we'll get, this is.
Which is family and union.
Between 900 and 1,000 in the first go. So let me, let me say first, hospitals and long-term cares will get that first Pfizer shipment. They'll distribute it separately. They'll get, they'll get first on that one. This is the Moderna one. So that includes nurses, physicians, respiratory techs, dentists, hygienists, nursing assistants, and I can send this to you, so you don't have to write it all there.
Yeah, that'd be good.
But just general EMT, paramedics, home health workers, personal care aides, community health workers, healthcare trainees, medical students, pharmacy students, nursing students, funeral home staff, pharmacists, public health nurses, public health and emergency preparedness workers in the first go. And what it, how that defines is high risk of exposure is defined as those caring for COVID-19 patients, cleaning areas where patients are admitted, performing procedures at high risk, handling deceased with COVID, administering the vaccine. So that's the first group. The second group is defined as anybody that. Anybody with two or more chronic conditions that are incarcerated, homeless, or shelter residents, healthcare workers that are not in 1A and have two chronic conditions, and frontline workers. And that's firefighters, police workers, meatpacking plants, seafood plants, food processing plants, manufacturing, retail workers, transportation workers, school staff, and other adults with two or more conditions, chronic conditions. So I suspect that that's where that, that will fall, is in Phase 2, what you're asking. Yep. Phase 3 is K through 12 students, if approved. They haven't approved that quite yet. They're waiting to see, I think the trials are still out there for, for kids, workers in industries that weren't included in 1 and 2, and then Phase 4 is the remaining population. But I'd be glad to send you this list, so you can see it.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, thank you very much, Karen. William, did you have anything you wanted to add?
A couple of things from the EOC standpoint. Thanks for allowing us to present tonight. Today, we moved the activation level of the EOC from a Level 2 to a Level 1. It's a formality, but it gives an indication that we have an expanding incident that is quite complex. And this is more for our documentation purposes, but it is an indicator that we're seeing our incident expand within the EOC. In the operations section, here's a couple of key points that we're monitoring. We have lost currently 20% of our 911 staff is out of work, being affected by COVID, either through positive results or exposures. This is one of the dangers that we see when community transmission is occurring at the rate that it is. We run the risk of losing significant parts of staffing across critical facilities when community transmission is this high, and it's something that we're continuing to monitor. Our service has not been affected. We have Plan B and Plan C that was constructed back in March and April at the beginning of this pandemic, that we can rapidly respond and adjust our operation. But I think it's important to understand that at this point, our service continues as normal. Continue to support that Health Department's operation with community testing, as Karen alluded to. Our EMS staff has been affected, but not at the level or the percentage that we're seeing in the 911 center. We have had mandatory mask policies at both agencies for many months, but what we are seeing is community transmission that is occurring outside the organization that is affecting staff. Our long-term care facility updates, Autumn Care is stable. They're currently on day 76 of an outbreak, but we've had no new cases reported there, and we're approaching 14 days. Rose Hill is stable with no new cases. They're on day 22 of the outbreak, and Marion Correctional Institution continues to add new positive with 27 staff members, nine inmates, 11 staff have recovered. The planning section from EMS, we continue to review and adjust our medical surge planning document that was constructed back at the beginning of this pandemic. And once again, we have staffing plans in place and ready to activate if we see loss of staffing affect EMS. Our number one priority is to maintain our normal operation. When someone calls 911, those ambulances have to be staffed and they have to be rolling. So that's why we continue to urge the community by wearing a mask. You're helping us protect our staff, you're helping protect the long-term care facilities, and every spike in community transmission that we have seen during this pandemic has led us to a long-term facility outbreak. And I can't emphasize that enough, is it's so dangerous for our long-term care facilities when we're seeing transmission this high. As we have moved through the different seasons at the EOC, our continuous planning for all hazards has to continue. Today, we took part in North Carolina Emergency Management's winter storm continuity of operations. There are three counties in North Carolina that are high priority during a winter storm. Surrey County for the I-77 corridor, Polk County for Saluda Grade, and McDowell County for Olaford Mountain. We're looking at the different types of operations. Several years back, we implemented through the state, allowing resources to be dispatched from the National Guard. Local emergency management can request a National Guard hotspot package that includes Humvees, wreckers, to help pull tractor-trailers out of the way, with the main objective to keep 40 open and prevent a mass sheltering operation. I mentioned that in the COVID update, because this year, it's more important than ever, that traffic has to flow, or we're going to see a situation in Olaford, to where we've got people being rescued off of the interstate if we have a large winter storm. Traditionally, we would put them in shelters that are already identified, but in the COVID crisis, that can't happen. We're in non-congregate sheltering, which makes it much more complex for the EOC. Our logistics section continues to roll out PPE and support long-term care and other critical facilities who have needs with regards to PPE, and they're going to be instrumental in supporting care and Health Department operation with any logistical requests. Public information continues to hit all of the items. We brought together a number of community leaders several weeks back and reformulated a strategic communication plan to stress the importance of wearing a mask. We've got simple solutions that could turn this around very quickly for us. If we could get people to wear masks, socially distance, and use good common sense, we can reverse these dangerous trends that we're seeing. Dr. Atkinson done an outstanding video and an open letter to the community, and if you haven't seen it, I would encourage you to view it or read it. That video actually went viral, and it's so important for people to listen to that message. Our finance section in the EOC has submitted a total of seven FEMA applications. We're totaling with application number eight and nine that we're looking at, and in the process of submitting, a total cost of $831,000. In closing, I would just, for Commissioner Allison, Commissioner Allison, to highlight the workload that the EOC team and our partners have, is we have open disasters going back to 2018. And we're currently working the recovery phase while operations normally last days, maybe a week. COVID has certainly been extraordinary in the length of time that the operation or the EOC has been activated, but the recovery phase for each disaster can take years. And currently, we're still working recovery from 2018 for Tropical Storm Alberto, Hurricane Florence, and Michael. We have the West Swoosh Atto Incident still open. We have state declarations for the flash flood event this year for the city of Marion and the town of Olaford, and we're awaiting a federal disaster assessment for Tropical Storm Zeta that occurred earlier this year. So lots of recovery missions still open for the EOC, but we continue to work with our heads up. Folks are fatigued and we're tired, but we're so close, I mean, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, but we have got to get through the tunnel, and the only way we're going to do that is more compliance with masks, people socially distant, refraining from large gatherings, to cut the community transmission. And I appreciate the support the Board has given us since March, and I'm glad to take any questions, of course.
Well, I'd just like to say that we've got a GM in William Keller here in this county. William has, you know, if this thing gets worse, or whatever the outcome is of it, if it be worse than what it is, it certainly can't be blamed on William and his staff, because they've, they've been, went far and beyond their call of duty to try to protect this community, this county, in making wise decisions and trying to encourage our county to be. encourage our county to be smart. So I do tip my hat to William and his staff for all the hard work they've done, and we it certainly doesn't go unrecognized.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add too that I appreciate with the 20% of your staff, 911 staff out, I appreciate the fact that William always has a plan. There's always Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. You probably got a D and E somewhere down there to hit in when you need it. But hats off to your staff, William.
We appreciate that, and it's a combination of public health and our team working together as one team to get this done, so we appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, William. Moving on to item D under appointments. We have our distinguished Chuck Abernathy here with us tonight, and Chuck, of course, was a former county manager. He was county manager when I come on board as county commissioner, so he he sort of got me up and running and
I'm laughing and turning red behind this one.
And also Chuck, you know, heads up there about economic development, and we appreciate all the hard work. He is continuing to work very hard to try to bring industry to our county and businesses to our county, and we certainly appreciate all the hard work he does. And so Chuck, we're going to let you lead us off on the universal lease.
I hope to be on your next agenda as well. Do they have copies of the map?
Yes, we did.
I told Ashley I would be would be real brief. I think it's it's simple. There might be a couple of details with the issue before you. Nate Dinjus called an hour ago. He was to be here with me, and he is the plant manager for Aria, which some people still know as Collins and Aikman. And he was going to give you a little update of what's going on with the company and why what we're proposing tonight is important to them. And again, he had a something quite quite urgent come up. So so the Universal Building, the building that you're in is right at 400,000 square feet, and it has some public components to it, like this 50,000 square foot section that you're in that the Community College operates. And then there's an EMS storage, vehicle storage facility that takes a little over 20,000 square feet, and there's a second 911 center. So it's got some public uses within that square footage that has four four companies that would be would be in the facility. The question before you would would lease the vacant space that is left on the on the southeast section of the building. If your map says 40,000 square feet on it, that would be incorrect. We think it's 35,650 in square footage that's currently vacant. So Aria, I sent a message out, maybe not to every company, but to probably 15 of them, and asked if anyone needed space. The space is good warehouse space, has high ceilings. It would need substantial work for it to be converted into a manufacturing area, primarily the heating system, the restrooms, and the and the office is is pretty, pretty what we're actually crumbing.
Spare.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's not not in very good condition. So what we're proposing is to lease the space to Aria. We're proposing that at $1.80 a square foot. Actually, you correct me. My thought is that it's currently generating the building $520,000 in revenue and that this would generate just south of $65,000 if you if you approve it. So you're you're getting close to $600,000 in in revenue. One one thing, and Ashley and I talked about about this, there has been conversation over the years, never a formal agreement, but there's been what I consider an honor of conversation where previous boards have, and maybe this board, has had discussions with the school system and with the Community College that the county would view the use of that space favorable favorably for a use that the county commissioners, the school board, and perhaps the trustees of the college agreed was was a use. And there's been discussions that might be along the lines of expanding early college and that kind of thing. So what my discussion with with Nate was was that, and again with Ashley, is that we would want to be able to honor those discussions. And so what we what we came up with was a, I don't remember if you said two or three-year lease. The company would like three, but a one-year period where we could notify them and they would have to leave in the event that some use was entertained by the by the Board of Commissioners. And I think your staff feels fairly strong that that we wouldn't want to tie it up, don't want to let it sit there empty and not generate revenue, but we also want to keep open the possibility of other uses. I also told the company that I would work as hard as I could if that happened to locate them additional space, including the possibility of space being freed up in this building if that happened. Ashley, you say?
Yeah, I did talk to Mr. Garrett recently about that, and the suggestion was that when Dr. Merritt comes on board next month, that the three administrators get together and talk about a lot of things, but one of the items be future plans. So we're at least a year, two, maybe three away from probably having a plan for using that space. So felt comfortable bringing this before you, even with maybe some possibilities now in the room back there.
Would that be a two-year lease with a year, and then go a year's time?
Company asked for three. Do you remember what?
I think three was what it was.
Three is what what they what they asked for.
What they asked for.
And they're a great employer. One of the larger employers, one of the better paying employers were very fortunate. I really would like to do the tier rankings at the next your next meeting and go through what's what's just happened with that. But we're faring fairly well with with our jobs and wages and that kind of thing. But to leave the space empty is to us doesn't.
I think the public would expect the board, if we have opportunity, to generate revenue and help keep the expenses down, possibly taxes down, what have you, to go ahead and enter in their lease and help support. And by doing that, we're supporting local a local business too with warehousing space.
Actually, there's a process we have to go through.
Right. So if if you would give your consent on this request, there is a 30-day advertisement requirement. So we would advertise for the January meeting for the formal approval. So tonight, it would be, it sounds great and formally approved then.
Is the $1.80 a square foot fair for the for the rest of the building? Is it consistent?
I think everything that we're leasing in the building is a little low. It's probably 225 is what space is leasing for for manufacturing, warehousing, maybe a little bit less. But so and something really that you might want to think about is to start doing some cost of living inflation adjustments with your with your budget, because the the rates have been pretty well locked in. There are several of the tenants paying $2 a foot, and then there's one paying less, less than that. He was, Tilson was a tenant when the building was purchased. And also, there was some discussion about annexation when the when the building was annexed. He began paying city taxes on it, and so that the number was kept a little bit lower. So $1.80 is, to be honest, a little low. My discussion started with him at at $2, and his his request is is for $1.80, and I think that's.
Chuck said it, but it's consistent with the other tenants, especially compared to the improvements that are in there.
And I guess the 65,000 is not budgeted, right?
That is right.
So again, let me be clear on this. You're talking about a firm two-year lease with them?
I think we're saying three.
Okay.
It's a three, but with if Mr. Garrett showed up tomorrow for, you know, let's get into the lease that, you know, six months from now, and he said, we've got this great idea, and it's coming all together. If you all consented and move forward with it and the plan was developed, then the company is saying they would take a one-year notice to vacate. So wherever it is in the lease, once it's active.
Then we all be included in the language too.
I'm okay with that.
That's right.
And we would need to be getting the bathrooms in order and all that.
Yeah, it saves us a lot of money. If we if we did manufacturing in there, the the space is very cold. The heaters are, they work. Terry, boy, he could, he could tell you way more. But I, but the build, the area is real cold, and its warehouses are often cold. And so they would put racking in the space. There is, there is a very modest restroom and a very modest office. It is really not very well done at all.
So no uptick would be required?
Right. I didn't hear if that was your question. I'm sorry.
That is a question.
Yes.
What'd you say? No uptick would be required, that's right.
Any other questions? No action required, deny.
Right, sounds like there's a consensus that we would advertise for formal approval next month.
Okay, what's the pleasure forward on that?
Back to you, and I say move forward, and we'll bring back in three days.
Motion, man.
Say.
Say. I'm in favor of that then. Say aye.
So I'm going to tell the company there's a technicality we have to meet, but the a January move-in is okay. Is that, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to item D, Sheriff's Office Staffing Update. Sheriff Ricky McKannon, is he going to be with us on the line?
He should be on the line now.
Sheriff McKannon, are you online? Can you hear us?
Good evening, I've got you. Can you hear me?
Yes. We'll let you, if you're if you're ready, Sheriff, we'll let you go ahead and proceed and give us the the information that you have before you.
Mr. Brown, I'm ready to proceed. I want to make sure that everybody can hear me okay. I'm not too loud or I need to be louder.
You're perfect. You're good.
All right. Well, good evening. I am sorry that I am having to come to you all tonight via conference call. Unfortunately, COVID has hit our family, and we are, my immediate family, we are currently in quarantine. If you don't mind, let me first say to Commissioners Ellison, Commissioners Ellison and Allison, welcome to the board. I'm sorry that I was unable to attend your swearing in today. I'm excited to work with you moving forward. Let me also take a second and thank Commissioners McPeters and Green for their service to our county and the support that they have given to our office over the years. So thank you all for allowing me some time this evening. I'm going to try my best to be brief. If you've been around me, you know that can be a concern at times, being brief. Let me let you know about what we've got going on. We've currently got 82 full-time jobs at our office. That's consistent of sworn and non-s sworn personnel. And currently, we have three vacancies on our patrol division. We've got one vacancy in our support division, which is actually a school resource officer. And we have one vacancy in our jail. Particularly now with this ongoing pandemic and the obvious concern of civil unrest nationwide, we need to get these jobs filled. Now, let me say this. I want to thank the board for consistently supporting our office and law enforcement in McDowell County. That support is felt and appreciated by all of us at Sheriff's Office. And let me confirm with you all that we have assembled and have a great team of men and women dedicated to serving you all and the citizens of McDowell County, and I could not be more proud of them. And it's because of that great team that I'm here and the promise that I made with the citizens that I'm here and I'm talking to you all via this conference call. I would like for you to notice that you are joined in the room, in my eyes, that you're joined by five of our team. You've got Chief Deputy Nathan Mace, Captain Chase and Grindstaff, Jason, who oversees our patrol division. You've got Captain Kent Smith, who oversees the support division, which includes our schools and our courts and our civil, our civil folks. You've got Captain Heath Hales, who oversees that jail, which, by the way, we are consistently staying full at or above 172 inmates each day. I'm proud of these guys and the Johnsons, they and their staff are doing, like I said, I could not be more proud of. And I'm honored to have those folks right there as part of my command staff. Your security tonight, if you look in the room, is Deputy Jack Googe. Deputy Googe is assigned to our support division, and he does a great job and a long-term, longtime member of our office, and I appreciate him. This year's been very challenging, no doubt. Historically, law enforcement, you know, we're used to working under stressful situations as it is, but now with COVID, the civil unrest we're seeing throughout the nation, it seems like less people are looking to get into this profession. As the elected sheriff, I promised the citizens of this county that I would assemble and try to put together the best team possible to serve them. Now, I believe the best of the best, we have the best of the best working for us now. And ever, we need to be looking to the future. We need to be making this job appealing to the new recruits and those looking. Two years ago, the Sheriff's Office in McDowell County assisted in a pay study with Burke County. And because we participated in that pay study, they were able to furnish us a copy of that pay study to us. Now, again, that was two years ago. What I note has not changed is our beginning rate since that pay study was conducted, our starting salary rate. So between the two-year-old pay study and current information, I've reached out to all the neighboring sheriffs around us that that border our county. I've also talked with some police departments bordering our county, and I have compiled and made a, tried to make an easy-to-read spreadsheet for you all. If someone can confirm that you have that spreadsheet or an attachment that is labeled Pay Study, Hiring and Scale Pay Study?
We do have that. We do have that written.
Okay, so let me, let's look at that real quick, if you don't mind. What I want you to pay attention to are down the left-hand column, you will see the counties that border McDowell. You will, I have highlighted in yellow the population of those counties, and then the square miles that is covered in that particular jurisdiction. I believe there is a page two, or let me scroll down to the bottom, you will also see I also included Marion, the city of Marion, and the city of Morganton in here as well. If you look across the top of this page, you're going to see different pay grades, different job descriptions. Now, the numbers listed with those job descriptions are what we were able to determine to be starting salaries. So for instance, you say sheriff, there's a starting salary. You say the chief deputy, that's the starting salary. You say the chief deputy, that's the starting salary according to this county or according to that pay study or the police departments that we've spoken with that we got off that pay study. Now, you will see down near the bottom in blue, we have averaged those salaries. Then in red below, you see what our current starting salaries are for those particular jobs. And you'll also notice, for your comparison, the population and square miles, which I know that's went up, I think that's front of you. I wanna say twenty-eighteen or seventeen cents is where we got this, the populations. What I want you to pay close attention to is the starting salaries of deputy sheriff and the detention officers. Out of that average, McDowell County, as far as deputy sheriffs, sworn deputies, McDowell County's starting salary is nine, over nine percent below the average starting salary. Detention officers are right at six and a half percent lower, below the average starting salary. And again, a lot of this data is from two years ago. I feel like we have to do something to get that, those starting salaries up in the different jobs. Now you're gonna see some gaps on this spreadsheet. Some of the information was not provided. If you go to Buncombe County's website, you can actually find their, they do have all their jobs listed. You can see sheriff. That sheriff starts at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and that chief deputy starts at a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I did not include that, 'cause I felt like those numbers just skewed the average. And so I tried to leave those higher-paying jobs out for a better average and more relative pricing here below us. What I did include was the starting salaries for their detention and for their deputy sheriffs. So you guys, if you haven't already, and ladies, Brenda and Sarah, I'm sorry, respond. If you will look at that, if you haven't already, you can look at that, and I'll be happy to ask. What does, what does one of the major areas concerned is, out of all those surrounding counties, we're the absolute lowest. We're the lowest starting salary of any county adjoining us for a deputy sheriff. And for me, and for these folks, I just feel like it's, we've got to do better. We've gotta do better. And a lot is, we've not looked at this in some time. It's been, it's been a while since we have really taken a look at this. I have focused on our jobs, our positions, how many people we've got to help each other. We've tried to increase our numbers in the jail, because the jail has such a hard job back there, doing what they do. And they're outside and they're out of mind a lot of times. But they do such amazing jobs, so we've tried to get them some more help. I supervised anywhere, like I said, from one-seventy-two to a hundred and eighty-plus inmates. And then our deputies out here, they're doing all they can to get from call to call, so we've tried to increase their numbers. And you guys, the board and Commissioner Vaughn, forgive me, I say guys a lot, you know how I feel, and I'm including you in that, but we, you all have been very supportive. You've given us some jobs, you've given us additional jobs. But if we don't do something about this pay, we're gonna continue to have the vacancies. We're not gonna be able to fill them. You know, you could give me fifty jobs, but if the pay is not appealing to this generation and to those that are looking to possibly make a move, by the way, from Buncombe or from any other surrounding counties, other counties that they might want to make a move from to work closer to home, or they may actually reside here in McDowell County, and they're traveling to other counties or other police departments, because that bottom dollar is more. I think we can do just a little bit better. So tonight, I've actually got two proposals. And I've thought about this long and hard. We've ran numbers. I've talked with other individuals about this from the finance director, we ran numbers with her. But here's, here's my two proposals. Proposal number one is I'm asking to increase the baseline salaries, the starting baseline salaries at our office, all of them. The non-s sworn jobs, which would be the administrative non-s sworn jobs, our jail, our detention facility jobs, detention officers, I'm proposing that baseline salary get a ten percent increase. I'm also proposing a fifteen percent increase to all of our sworn jobs, as far as the baseline salaries go. Now when you hear ten and fifteen percent, I want you to understand, that's not gonna put us at the top. That's not gonna put us in the top. But it's gonna put us in a position to compete for some applicants and some of the best applicants that's coming out of schools. They're going to want to come and sit down if they're looking at strictly those bottom-dollar numbers. What are you gonna pay me? Because that's what I hear. I hear from those applicants that sit across from us, what does it pay? And now in this day and age, they're looking on the internet. They're looking on the internet, find and look up see what their baseline salaries are, to decide whether or not they even want to come have an interview, if they even want to put an application in. And when we're the lowest paid in all the surrounding counties, I don't, we don't expect to have the applicant that Avery County, Yancey County, Mitchell County, Rutherford County declined, and so they come and apply for us. I wanna position ourselves and this office, for me selfishly, but for the citizens of this county, to recruit the best of the best out of these schools to come here and serve McDowell County. So that's my first proposal. My second proposal is this, if we can increase, if we can increase those starting salaries, then we've got to do something for those currently working and employing at our office. We've got to somehow make that increase work with them too that have been there for a few years. Because if we give them this increase, which is deserved, then on the starting salaries, then that's gonna put somebody coming in off the street making more than somebody who's been there for a couple of years. So what I am, what I am proposing and requesting is this. For those currently employed at our office, from the admin assistant at the front window, our detention officer, to the deputy sheriff, every employee currently employed at that office, I want to give them a ten percent increase. I want to give them, let me restate that. I want to give them to the new starting salary or ten percent, whichever is higher. For some, it's gonna be that starting salary in that first proposal. For some, it's gonna be the ten percent increase. Now I don't believe I have to go through with you all as far as what these men and women do each and every day. Putting the bulletproof vest on to come to work, putting a stab vest on to work in that jail. They're willing to risk it all for all of us and all the citizens. I can't tell you, I've not been a part of requesting an increase in this matter. And I feel like it needs to be done. We're at a time specifically now that it needs to be done. And moving forward, we just reevaluate this every year or two years. And if there needs to be a small increase, then we talk about it, so it won't be such a large request at one time, years down the road. So here's what I'm saying. If we give that ten percent increase right now to all of our people that's currently employed, and for the record, in case you're wondering, I'm requesting that increase be for every employee at that office except for one. If we can do this, what I would like to do is move a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that jail inmate revenue. You know, we house those federal inmates, we house Mitchell County inmates, we do contract housing. We've got some revenue there. You guys approve, you, the commissioners are familiar with the revenue. We worked hard to spend that to help our office and to help the county and county funds. So we would like to move a hundred and fifty thousand this year, a hundred and fifty thousand next year to go towards this request of getting our current employees that ten percent increase. I would like to see the salary increase, our baseline salaries increase. January one, if that's possible, and this increase for our current employees. I'm, you know, I had all these nice notes and things, but I'm willing to, I'm just speaking from the heart. And as a sheriff, I promise the citizens to give them the best. And we're giving them the best. But we've got to look ahead to the future. And to make it appealing in this day and age, we've got, we've got to get this up. You can look at the second attachment I give to you. It is labeled "Starting Salary Proposal." Again, you can see the average pay, what we currently pay, and what I'm proposing. And you can see what that looks like with each job, the detention officer, the deputy sheriff, moving up. So I am, I'm open to answering your questions. I just want you all to know that I feel like the citizens deserve the best. We all want to do our part in getting those best coming. And unfortunately, it's just a matter of fact the folks today are looking to see what those numbers are. Want to see what they pay. I've had applicants sit across from me at my desk who tell me they want to be at McDowell County Sheriff's Office. And they hear the number, and they talk back a day or two later, going to other county or other police departments for a couple thousand dollars digits. When I heard them and believed them when they said they wanted to be at that sheriff's office, you can see people in McDowell County, you can see other agencies' vehicles from police departments in other counties to other sheriff's offices. They say they want to be here, but they can make more money next door. I think we can make this better all the way around. And we were willing to, like I said, commit that a little bit towards this request. And I'm ready for your questions.
Well, let's start off, Ricky. I'd like to say I appreciate the good job you do. And also, I'd like to say that I think our board is a very proactive board, and I don't think you would deny that. We try to be conscious of the needs of our county employees. And, you know, I made the comment, stated over six years ago that our county employees were underpaid in all aspects and never, in every area of employment in the county, whether it be Sheriff's Department EMS or Terry, just, you know, everybody in our county has been underpaid. Now I think the problem for this was created more than twenty-five, thirty years ago, whenever, for whatever reason, we had boards back then that wasn't concerned about the employees, the county employees, and wasn't doing these comparisons that needed to be done back then. But I think that we, as a board now, are certainly very proactive in trying to accommodate the county employees and get an increase in our pay skills. What we're doing now, and I'll say this on my behalf, and then I'll let the others speak. I have been speaking with the county manager and with our accountant, and, you know, we're crunching numbers now, Ricky, and trying to see what we can do and what we can't do. But it's certainly, we have been advised by you on this, and we take it very seriously. And we were, we are looking at it very seriously. And, but in saying that, I'll just open forward to other candidates' questions.
Mr. Brown, let me jump in here and tell you this, that I know you have been supportive. This board consistently has been supportive. And I want to make that clear. This request is not in any way intended to feel like you have not been, and I appreciate it, and those employees appreciate it. We feel the support, and we know you guys are not looking to defund us. I feel like you all are looking to defend us, and our people feel that way. Again, thank you for the support. Go ahead.
Sheriff, this is Patrick Ellis. I just, first meeting tonight with Mr. Allison, and I would like to just request, instead of making action tonight, to table it for even thirty days or something like that, so that we can do our due diligence in making sure that we do the right thing, because we are interested in making sure that we are defending you and your department. Also wanting to look at and make sure that it is equitable for the county to do so. So that's where I'm sitting today. But in all means, I do know that when you were talking, you were talking about putting the vest on. And I agree with you. And I just want to make sure that, I'm not prepared to make, to vote tonight. If the others are wanting to vote, that's fine. I'm gonna rescind for now, because I just don't have the due diligence yet on it. So, but I do want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the county.
Sheriff, I want to say that we appreciate you and your man, you know, we're in here, you're not here, and they're here, and looking at them, and know them, and friends with them, and that. So you've given some good information here tonight. And as already been stated, we'll be looking at it and seeing what we can do to be fair to your staff and to other county staff members also. But thank you for all you do.
Sheriff, can I ask, Sheriff, so I am clear what we have before us. This study was, I'm assuming, by what you said, I understand, was done about two years ago. But when I looked at the bottom of this sheet, and there's the red line crossed there that represents McDowell's salaries, that's a current salary, not a two-year-old salary. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That red salary, the red numbers is our current starting salary.
And the other numbers are two years or whatever, according to their study, correct?
Yes, ma'am, some of them are. Some of them, I'll give you an example. I did plug in, within the last couple of months, I got Yancey's number from their sheriff, and I got Mitchell County from their folks. The Avery County number was received a few months back. The Buncombe, the Burke, and Rutherford numbers, I believe it was Rutherford that was received off of that study from two years back.
Okay, thank you.
As well as the Morganton Public Safety and the Marion PD number I used on here was part of that study as well.
I appreciate what y'all do, and I'm on board to help and do what we can, and we will study this over and give all the help we can, I'm sure.
Sheriff, I just want to say thank you to you and your team for serving and protecting us here in McDowell County. I just want, I have one question for you. What is the bottom dollar as far as, I know you are proposing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If these changes were made, what is that dollar amount that you are proposing? Um, if these changes were made, what is that dollar amount that you are proposing?
It would be a $400,000 increase to accommodate all the current employees there, that 10% Approximately $400,000, I want to say, um, it might have been four oh five. Uh, she, Finance Director provided me that information with benefits and all, uh, and then I, we went back and, uh, she had left one on there that I did not want, uh, the increase for, and then that changed that number, and I'm trying to see, I've got it here close, but anyway, basically $400,000 to get that increase done.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So, thank you, thank you all for, uh, allowing me the time, uh, to speak, and, um, on behalf of the men and women that I work for, and on behalf of the citizens that I'm elected to serve, um, I appreciate you all, and, um, thank you for, uh, for your support of us, um, it means a lot, means a lot to all of our people. So, again, congratulations to the board, new board members, I'm sorry to throw this on you, on your first meeting, but, uh, we've been having, um, we currently have some home born BLTP classes, the basic law enforcement training classes, and I've had two out of this one class that chose to go to much smaller agencies, uh, because of the money, and I don't see that changing moving forward. So, I felt like it was necessary to get this on the agenda as soon as I could, and again, I apologize, uh, you're right, Commissioner Walker, those guys are there and I'm not. And trust me when I say I'd much rather be there, um, in person, so, I thank you, uh, thank all of you, thank for your time, and if you need us, we're here for you.
Thank you, Sheriff, and, uh, we appreciate your time, and we appreciate the good job that you do, uh, we certainly don't take your request lightly, and we, we will be looking at it, uh, in a very serious manner. Also, I think on behalf of the board, we'd like to wish you good luck, you and your family with dealing with this COVID thing, and, uh, we want you to know that you, certainly your family will be in our prayers.
Well, I appreciate that, and Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you. Okay.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. Okay. Moving on to item F, approval for the bond for register of deeds, and we have Lydia Eppler here tonight, our newly elected register of deeds.
I want to say while she's coming out, Mr. Chairman, this is a process required, uh, a new registrar is, uh, comes into the office, so this is, uh, by statute, uh, for their first day.
We welcome you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come this evening just to provide you with an update. At 8:30 a.m., I took the oath of office and swore in the staff. I'm proud to say, then we traveled straight to the office and met the software company, county administration staff and facility maintenance staff. There was a great amount of teamwork, we had, we all had operations, we had operations up and running within one hour. Over the course of the day, we completed all transactions, including vital records, real estate transactions, and a veterans transaction. Those transactions totaled 36 filings, recordings. In addition, customer service items and questions were handled, and we have reestablished all partner agency agreements and services. The county webpage and McDowell deeds sites are up and functioning for e-filings and all other services. I want to say a special thank you to county finance, county HR, county facilities, county IT, and the county manager, and clerk to the board. I look forward to working with you over the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, motion, second vote on the bond.
Make a motion to approve the bond.
Second. Motion and second.
Yeah.
Comments, questions? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. An old business, uh, item A, under old business, facilities.
Mr. Chairman, would it be okay to do the Firewise presentation?
Oh, yes, I missed that one, that was, uh, gee, I'm sorry, I missed that one. Let's do that, uh, the Firewise project presentation, Gene Haas, please come up.
Thank you.
We welcome you.
And I do have brochure, sorry I didn't get these to you beforehand, for more information, and I'll talk more about it. You're welcome. You're welcome. There you go. There you go. Thank you. I do appreciate the opportunity to come to you and talk tonight about our program, the McDowell Community Wildfire Network. My name is Jen Haas, and I work with Mountain Valley's Resource Conservation and Development Council, RC&amp;D for short. We are a nonprofit organization that addresses conservation of land and water resources across eight counties in western North Carolina. Last month, we completed a project at North Cove Elementary, with, that entailed restoring a stream bank, we removed invasive species and, or, sorry, invasive plants, and installed a nature trail along Limekill Creek. We work with communities to improve water quality through education, restoration, and river cleanups. We connect local farmers and rural small businesses to grant programs for renewable energy projects, and we educate residents about their homes' risk for wildfire and how to mitigate their risk. So, I'm currently the wildfire preparedness coordinator for the, and manage the McDowell Community Wildfire Network. Back in November of last year, Mountain Valley was approached by the Grandfather Ranger District to join a roundtable discussion about building wildfire resiliency in McDowell County. McDowell County covers 441 square miles, incorporating some of the steepest terrain in western North Carolina. Steep cordages are filled with years of, of fuel buildup and overgrown rhododendron, leaving limited access for establishment of fuel breaks. The county's population is just under 45,000 people, with 70% of them living in the Wui. The Wui is the wildland urban interface, this is where structures and human development, um, intermingle with undeveloped wildland, forests, or vegetative fuels. North Carolina has more Wui acres than any other state in the lower 48, and our growth and development increases this acreage every year. The county borders a high wildfire risk zone with a history of frequent wildfires. Old homes are nestled into these mountain communities, along with newer gated communities with their own set of issues involving seasonal residence, heavily wooded blocks, narrow winding roads, no accessible water sources, and poor cell phone service. The interface creates great challenges for fire managers, as nearly every fire or its associated smoke may impact homes, roads, farms, or other development. In 2016, western North Carolina had more wildfire acres burned, over 62,000 acres, than the previous 50 years combined. Recurrent severe droughts with wildfire managers have wildfire managers, community leaders, and residents concerned that this significant wildfire risk will grow within the Appalachians and the, and become a risk for people who live here. Community awareness and action continue to be the forefront of our local mitigation efforts. So, increasing defensible space, hardening homes, and completing fuel treatments are necessary to live safely with wildland fire on the landscape. The reality today is that fire agencies cannot solve the problem alone. Fire riders do not have the resources to defend every single home during a wildfire. So, it's up to personal responsibility, it's the, it's the residents who need to take care of their backyards and focus on their homes and the land that surrounds their homes. Research tells us that if we really want to reduce the risk, that we need to focus on the first five to 30 feet surrounding your home. And so, the first step with this program is to identify your risk, take, take a walk around your yard and your home, and just look at the building material that your home is made of, or the dead leaves that are in your gutters, and look at specific ways that maybe embers or crown fires can affect and maybe ignite your home during, if a wildfire is nearby. So, this first five feet is called the immediate zone, and you just need to reduce those flammable materials. So, um, by taking a look around your house, you can gain awareness of what you can do. Free home assessments are available to residents performed by myself and North Carolina Forest Service staff. There are also self-assessment forms online, but we suggest that your neighbor complete those to reduce the bias. The second step is to mitigate your risk. So, first, identify, get that home assessment done, next is mitigate the risk. So, um, a lot of wildfires, wildfire risk can be reduced by performing simple tasks around your property, such as clear off dead vegetation from your roof lines, gutters, decks, porches, patios, along with fence lines. Clear any flammable from within five to 30 feet of your home. rake out any landscaping mulch or dead vegetation from five feet away from your home or underneath your deck. You can install lattice underneath your decks to keep leaves out. And also trimming back lower tree branches to reduce ladder fuels, or any branches or shrubs that touch your house. Because again, if a wildfire comes by and an ember that can travel over a mile hits your house or that vegetation, it could cause ignition. The main idea is to reduce hazardous fuels surrounding your home. And through this grant, we have purchased a wildfire mitigation tool cache, including leaf blowers with gutter attachments, so you don't have to climb up on a ladder. We have loppers, handsaws, rakes, wheelbarrows, pole saws, and PPE. This is all free to use by McDowell County residents. All you have to do is call me up, or email me, or fill out the form, and I will deliver it to you and give you instructions.
We can tell you the message, too, Kim.
Remember that whole responsibility of residents to take action?
I'm sorry.
No worries. Um, there are contractors out there who you can hire to do the work. Um, and we do have, uh, some of our partners are the Marion Fire Department, and the Nature Conservancy, and the US Forest Service in the Grandfather Ranger District, and they do have mitigation crews, but we're, um, selectively using those for communities in need. So, if you make a case. If residents have tackled fuel removal around the home, we encourage them to think about ways to prepare for an emergency, such as assembling an emergency supply kit or developing an evacuation plan. We ask them to form a neighborhood committee to improve regulations such as landscaping, home design, and building material used in new construction. So, third step of our program is track your work. We'd like to hear what residents have done to build wildfire resilience in their community and celebrate that success. There's a ripple effect with this work. It benefits more than just one property, it helps the local fire department, your neighbors, your neighbors' neighbors, the North Carolina Forest Service, local businesses, and many others. Currently, um, so, in November, we applied and got a 40,000, or, yeah, 40,000 wildfire mitigation grant through coalitions and collaboratives, a US Forest Service funded program out of Colorado. We formed a partnership with local agencies, and, um, this grant cycle lasts until June of next year. So, currently in McDowell, there are two Firewise USA communities, Recognized Gateway and Creston Developments. They are active in organizing their residents to do mitigation workdays at least once a year, that's all we ask, which involves helping neighbors haul slash to the road for a tripper to come by. We are reaching out to other communities currently in the county to participate in our program, and our goal is to create defensible space around 120 homes in McDowell County by June. We're able to do site visits and community presentations, either outside or virtual, to get the conversation going in the community. We've even done presentations for community groups, like the Marion Brewery Club. For more information, you can go to our website, um, our website's on that brochure, and you can sign up for home assessments or request mitigation tools on there, or feel free to reach out to me, email or phone. Uh, with community involvement and participation, we can create a safer environment against wildfire before it threatens our community. Is your community ready for wildfire? Any questions?
One thing that, uh, come to mind with me, uh, you said, I believe you stated that, uh, there had been more fires, wildfires in the past couple years than there had in the past 50 years?
Yeah.
And, and, and what does that contribute to? Again, uh, you know, we have had, uh, and I, I think I'm correct on this, I believe we've had more rainfall in the past couple years than we have in the past 50 years, so, you know, it seems a little strange, but, uh, what does that contribute to?
So, there's multiple factors, there's the fuel buildup. So, with that rain comes vegetation that wants to grow, and so, when the rain comes, the vegetation grows, and then we have droughts. We have more rain, but we have more dry days as well, and so with those droughts, that vegetation dries out, and then if a spark goes, or if someone's burning a slash pile in their yard and it gets away, that can turn real big. So, with the rain comes more risk sometimes. Um, it is hard to reach residents and encourage them, because we do, you know, live near tropical, not, not tropical rainforest, but a temperate rainforest, so it's very wet, it's very hard for people to see that risk, but, um, there's a lot of data out there, and, and you just kind of look around and look at the past fires, you know, Gatlinburg, kind of, nobody expected that, and it just happened. So, you know, out west, it's, it's lightning strikes, um, it's about 50/50 lightning strikes and human caused, here it's 99% human caused. So, this burn pile's getting out, it's a neighbor's house catching on fire, um, there's a lot of risk.
Thank you. Yeah, the questions come. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. County Manager?
We have put out on social media a lot of the information, but we'll continue to do that, encourage, you know, those are basic steps that homeowners should take to protect their own property, so, um, the resources are there, but we'll gladly keep pushing out the message.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Haas, for coming in and sharing that information with us.
Thank you so much.
And now we'll move to old bits, and we'll have the facilities update. Mr. County Manager?
Yes, sir, um, thank you. On this item, just a few updates on this, um, benefit for, especially for the new commissioners and the public, um, and everyone else. The, the former Kirksey Building, county has owned for maybe a month or two now, staff being myself, Mr. DePoister, uh, behind me, have met with our architect Chuck Hamrick. Again, uh, I think I reported last, uh, meeting that he had measured all the existing space as it was when it closed as a funeral home, uh, and has those drawings. He then met with staff to understand what the needs were for the employees going to that space. So, clearly, the chapel, uh, was designated by the board as the commissioners' boardroom. Beyond that, uh, there are needs for office renovation and those sorts of things. So, he has met with staff, uh, including, uh, finance, human resources, uh, and Ms. Mitchell and myself, to understand where we are now, and just sort of transplanting that to the new building. So, he should have draft drawings in, maybe by the end of this week, and it's just a, a first draft, and it'll be, uh, for board and staff to look at, to, to make notes and go with him, uh, back and forth on what changes are necessary. So, we'll bring those before you, hopefully by the 21st meeting. Uh, the other item, uh, several months ago, you asked to, um, at least get quotes on removing, uh, two older buildings, um, on Garden Street. These are, um, adjacent to the county administration building there in Garden, um, county purchased over, over time. Uh, the discussion was to remove those to expand parking, uh, adjacent to the courthouse and administration building. Uh, we did get three, uh, quotes sent from local companies. Uh, the lowest quote, um, bring for your consideration tonight, uh, is for 26,500 to remove the buildings completely, and that includes asbestos remediation, uh, since they are older, of course. Uh, so there would be asbestos remediation, uh, complete demolition, and, uh, a grade, so it would grade out the, uh, the property to match the, the more or less existing hillside that's on either side of it. Uh, so that would essentially leave a gravel, uh, gravelled area in its place. So, again, it does not include paving, uh, we probably want to look at in the spring for that parking that was discussed, but with your approval, we can initiate this very soon.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve-
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the low bid of $26,500 to remove those buildings because of the need of parking is so great in downtown and especially in light of the fact that when the parking deck was redone and the new courthouse addition was completed, and we had, we lost 25 spaces, Terry. How many we lose total?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. So we're down a net 45 with all the work done, but I will make that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on this, comments?
Does the quote of 26,000 include making it a parking lot, grading it for parking, making it a parking lot? Or is it just demolition only and removal?
It includes grading, and it would have essentially a gravelled, you know, final product. But again, we would come back in the spring with paving and everything.
Has anyone done any kind of study to see how many parking spaces that would create?
It's a little hard to tell based on what the final grade would look like. We did think, based on some initial, essentially just counting on the aerial map, maybe about 15 spaces. So it's not going to be a tremendous amount, but it would be a net gain compared to what we have now.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? We've got a motion on the floor. So, got a second. All in favor, say aye. Any votes? Okay. Moving next item on the list, Public Shooting Range update. Go ahead, Mr. County Manager.
Yes, sir. Again, this is mostly an update, but there also is a, an ask in there, at least, for you to think about. The Public Shooting Range project on Ashworth Road definitely is continuing. When it rains, with it being so much of a grading project, again, that delays them, but we're more or less on schedule. Again, I mentioned last meeting that should be completed in August of '21. One of the things we have mentioned before, and we've got time, there's no huge rush, but we didn't even think about a name of the facility. The state just calls it the Ashworth Road Shooting Range, and that's just the placeholder, of course. And so I did list some of the names of facilities that are operated cooperatively with Wildlife Resources. So you have those on your, on your list. The nearest being the Foothills Public Shooting Complex in Cleveland County, but there are a few others that probably makes sense for those communities. Odom Shooting Range in North Hampton, Holly Shelter Shooting Range in Pender County. Holly Shelter is an area of Pender County. So you see some named after areas, some named after the county itself, some named after individuals. So you don't have to come up with a name tonight, we have no firm deadline, but at least need to be thinking towards that way.
Well, I'd like to say, but personally, I'm not prepared to even entertain a name myself at this point in time. So any comments, questions from the board?
We'll think about it.
Okay. All right, if not, we'll move along then. Thank you for that. Next item on the list is, I see Emergency Services Building Update. Go ahead, Mr. County.
Yes, sir. Very brief update again. Just want to make sure we remind you and the public of all the great things going on in the face of a pandemic. We do have construction continuing on Station 4 and the headquarters facilities for emergency services. Again, Station 4 is on the north side of Marion, the former credit union, and the headquarters is on Barnes Road across the interstate from where we are now. We have a couple of simple pictures in the packet for you showing Station 4, great detail there, with the truck bay in the back, has the brick facade on it as of last week, as you can see. The picture from the headquarters site was taken from the MAMA helicopter when they were here a couple of weeks ago. So it's progressed a little bit since then, so they're very close to, they have started on underground utilities underneath where the building pad will go, but not quite started the building foundation as of yet, but that is essentially imminent, imminent, so moving right along.
Okay. Do you have anything you wanted to add to that, Mr. Kellner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any comments, questions for the board? All right, we'll move along then. Update, the Recreation Facility update.
Let's see, different, make sure I get all my pages all caught up here. I wanted to do a quick update on recreation. We did mention last month, again, there's so much going on, we just make sure we keep you updated. The property at the Recreation Center, that's on Academy Street, that is under survey now or very soon to be, with the idea of once that survey is completed, we will have a topographical survey for the landscape architect. So he is, that's Fred Blackley, again, especially for new board members. This is the landscape architect that is used by Chuck Hamrick. He does all of his design work for facilities here in the county, comes highly recommended. So once he has that survey, he will proceed with a plan to bring back to the board for direction. And so, again, one of the things we've talked about, the Recreation Center, is a new driveway and improved access for that property. So a lot of, a lot of good things coming along, just took a lot of steps to get taken care of. So the next big one will be the surveys. We're excited to see that happen.
Our board is certainly excited to see things happen with our recreation facilities. I know Mr. Walker has been an advocate of this for quite some time, and we certainly support whatever funding we can do to keep this thing going. Moving on to item C, board appointments. Madam Clerk.
We have the... There are one full member vacancy on the planning board and one alternate vacancy. You have the list of applicants before you, and I would like to point out that you have two applicants in there, one from Robert McCollum and Andrea Parker. Those applications were received at the first of the year, and I do hold those for one year. And I reached out to them to see if they still wanted to be considered, and I did not receive a response back from them. I emailed and did call also. That was Robert McCollum, Andrea Parker.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
As you, if you will vote, and I'll collect those and count those first for the full member.
Okay.
And then after that vote, you have your ballot for an alternate member, and then you'll, that will eliminate one of them.
Do you want to pick a full member first?
Okay, the vote is Ellis, Brown, and Walker, or James Williams, and Vaughn and Allison for Patno. So Williams will be the full member. So now that's a vote of three to two. And so now if you'll take your alternate, Markoff, James, do not consider him, and then vote for an alternate member. Okay, that vote is four votes for Patno with Ellis voting for Shaver. So Patno will be the alternate.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
And next, if I can go ahead, Mr. Chairman, on the Transportation Board application, you have a resignation letter from Joy Schufert. She has retired from Foothills Industries. And Foothills appoints someone to serve on the Transportation Board. So Mr. Andrew Ty, the CEO at Foothills, has asked for your approval and approving Ms. Nancy Moore and your application is in her packet to serve as, she serves as Director of Services at Foothills, and they would like your approval for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request.
We have a motion to approve Nancy Moore. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any votes?
Okay. And the last item, if you don't mind, I'd like to refer the committees to the county manager because he can describe each committee each year after, especially after an election when we get new members in. The commissioners serve on various boards and committees, and that needs to be re-decided who's going to serve on what, so he can describe that. But if you'll notice, the second page, the NCACC Legislative Goals Conference will be January the 14th to the 15th, and that will be through a virtual format. This year, they have asked for a voting delegate, and they also asked for an alternate voting delegate. In the event that the voting delegate could not attend, we already have an alternate approved. So I need you to vote on that tonight, please.
Who was our voting delegate last year?
Ashley.
I think, I think it was Commissioner Green.
It was.
Two years ago, they do this every two years on the, for the long session. I did do a voting delegate on, I think, the business meeting. Commissioner Green was the delegate. That's when they went to Raleigh and voted.
Mr. Chairman, I have, you know, pretty busy, so I would decline that if somebody just wants to volunteer, I would support it.
I would too. Do we have any volunteers? I think Chris is trying to volunteer.
I'll volunteer.
Okay. We've got a volunteer. All in favor, Chris, say aye. Any votes?
We also need an alternate.
I heard Brenda say something about volunteering.
I'll volunteer as an alternate.
Okay. All in favor, Brenda, say aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now.
Now, on the, we need to vote on, who was that again, the...
All this is for the different committees that is listed.
But now there was, there was another one that we needed to vote for. We're good, no problem. Committees now. I am good on the committees that I'm on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'm on the Ice Thermo Planning and Development Commission and the Ice Thermo RPO. Those two are just kind of out of my wheelhouse. Those I would like to come off on if somebody else will serve. If somebody else doesn't want to serve, I will continue and continue to go and do my best. But I don't feel like I'm giving McDowell County 100% of what they need because it is so far out of my wheelhouse.
Mr. Chairman, I've got small kids that my wife needs a lot of attention to at the house, so I would, I can take that one.
I would decline that as well, please.
Is this something we have to decide on tonight?
You don't have to. There are a couple that, we're actually not meeting for the month of December for most of these. For example, the Joint Utility Committee would meet, that meets the third Monday, and...
And I'll say this, you know, I don't mind, it's a, we have the chairman and one commissioner of the school, the school. The city has the mayor and two board members. So I would still like to serve on that.
On which one?
The Joint Utility.
Yeah, I'm giving that one. And I would stay on the others if nobody else, I want, I would do it. But, I like to say, I just feel like somebody else might could serve it better and be better for our county. But I'll keep tracking along if we need to, I don't care.
There are a couple that we have departing members on, especially the, the Foothills District Health Board, that was Commissioner Green. And that's a pretty vital seat these days, of course, the pandemic. The VIA Health Commissioner Advisory Committee, that's an advisory committee Mr. McPeters was on, and they meet quarterly, and it's, again, it's advisory, and there's, I don't want to diminish the importance, but it is something that might take a backseat to like a Foothills District Health Board, for example. But still important, VIA is the area of mental health and substance use agency, by the way. We could put it on the January agenda if you'd like.
You know, I've got all that I can handle. I can't...
Myself included.
I can't take on anymore, so it's pretty much up to the rest of the board to try to fill these vacancies.
You're basically looking at the VIA, the Foothills, and Commissioner Vaughn keeps the other two. That's all that we're looking at.
What is the Foothills District, California?
They meet usually about quarterly, and they meet at night. They do rotate between the two counties. I imagine most of their meetings lately have been virtual, but they haven't met in this room as recently as June. And VIA, again, it's quarterly, and those have all been virtual since March.
And you said Foothills is quarterly as well?
That's right.
If it's a pleasure of the board, I'll take care of both of those.
All in favor of that?
I mean, I'm good with it, but Patrick, that didn't leave him with any committee. How's that happen?
I didn't hear him really jumping really hard up there.
I didn't want to exclude him though, I wanted to make sure he had. But I'm good with that though, if Chris wants to, I mean, I have issue with it.
Are you good with that, Patrick?
Good.
All in favor, say aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll say too, that at any time during the year that a commissioner is really under a busy load, that they need somebody to pop in, I know the school board at our education committee meetings, sometimes they'll have another member come that's not on there, and I see no problem with that. I mean, we, we're all on the same team, we're all commissioners, so if somebody can pick up the gap, somebody's got something going on. I mean, there's no issue, in my opinion, with another board member going that wants to.
And if you see the need to, the desire to want to be on the committee, we'll find one for you.
How is the connect McDowell, that's kind of near and dear to my heart, and I didn't know if that's something that you wanted to stay on or not.
Well, that's something I would stay on because it's something that I have, you know, the same way. But...
That is something that I know on the school board, we've got computers in everybody's hands, and we don't have access.
That's right. We don't.
That's not right.
I have argued for years, yeah.
Let me ponder over it, and we'll see what we can come up with.
Okay. Moving along then, the new business, the, I made a universal park dis, golf proposal. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Behind the building, there is a large pond and then a small pond. They're actually man-made ponds that were constructed when the original facility was built for fire suppression, and so they feed our fire suppression system to this day. But also around it, the pond...
But also, around in the ponds is a nice walking trail system that's been developed over the years. It's a very, and fishing is allowed there, permit required, of course, but it's a nice area. And so, people call it Universal Park, but it's maintained well, and people like to go up there and have a quiet retreat, I guess. There are a couple, a couple of years ago, the early college approached the commissioners about placing what's called Disc Golf. It's essentially a metal basket with chains on it, about placing a course up around the ponds. There were a couple of baskets placed, but only about three, and, you know, school kids get older, and, you know, projects maybe lose steam, et cetera. But fast forward to today, you have a proposal in front of you from what I'll call local Disc Golf enthusiasts that have reached out to us to want to complete that course, to have 18 holes for Disc Golf. And there's a map of what the course would look like, and there's a narrative in there as well. But the proposal would be to utilize property, again, to the rear that's not being utilized otherwise for this course, for this type of activity. And so, this is the first, you've heard of it, it's the initial request. The county attorney is present and suggested that we look into liability concerns, and that's something that we've not done yet and would want to do. My suspicion is that our insurance carrier would say, it's fine, it's a recreational activity, you do all kinds of things, it's fine. But I don't know that, so we'd like to at least have the topic introduced to you, and if there's, you know, interest in at least looking into it, you know, ask a few more questions before bringing it back to final approval.
No action required tonight, so any comments, questions, many of them.
Look forward to hearing back from our attorney.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I believe Burke County had one on the same road that you go past the Freedom High School Park, or Freedom Park on the left side where the state cars used to be. I think they have one of those, and I believe there's one in Boca County, too. But I raised a question about liability, you know, who's going to be there, and that sort of thing.
So, we'll get some answers for you for next month.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item B, under new business administrative items. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, especially for the new members. The administrative items typically are what I call like housekeeping, so we'll have budget amendments. We have a water system, of course, and we'll talk about water leak adjustments. These are just kind of cleaning things up, but that require board approval. We do have EMS write-offs this month, and again, a little more detailed than normal. These are accounts that, you know, you have descriptions listed while we're asking for a write-off, but typically, they're beyond 10 years of where we can collect, or someone has passed away, and our finance office is responsible for the collection. And they definitely go through every legal collection process available to them, but these folks just didn't have means or employment typically, so...
I mean, we have right now on this. We'll vote on all of it one time.
You know, there is not a, as far as the total, this is catching up for a few months. I'm scrolling down. Don't have a total number of the accounts yet.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the EMS write-offs, that's presented.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You vote.
Thank you.
Okay. That was under administrative. Do we have anything under tax matters?
Yes, sir. You have, again, for benefit of the new members, these are items that are prepared by our tax assessing department. So, we do releases, and that's where a bill has been created in error, or in this instance, there are several mentioned that a home had burned several years ago, and we were generating a bill and sending it to these folks, and it was not paid. And then, when it's brought to their attention, our attention, there was no home there because it had burned. We needed to correct that, so they have provided proof of that. We also do what are called discoveries, and so you see HCA, DBA, Mission Hospital. This is a, essentially, a listing adjustment for some of their equipment, and so that's why you see that. And that's where we, you know, new businesses discover, oh, we didn't know we had to list that, or a home that's been built, et cetera. And that's what you pass those.
Discussion board.
Make a motion to approve tax matters, that's presented.
Second. Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, 2021 meeting schedule approval. Is that Madam Clerk?
Yes, you have this scheduled before you, and that's laid out for all of the year, and you'll notice that the, I think it was, it was one date I had to switch and put it to the fourth. Was that the Martin Luther King holiday?
January 25th instead of the 18th.
So, you'll notice I moved it to the fourth Monday. If you want to move that, you certainly can, but we need to approve the schedule, and then we'll post it on the website, and we'll be posting it there obviously.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the schedules, that's presented.
Second. Got a motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, it's time for citizen comments. Do we have anybody here that wanted to speak or make any comments?
No, sir, no one's signed it.
Okay. Mr. Staff, greetings. It's...
Mr. Chairman, one thing, the connect with McDowell request, did we hit that?
We had a little bit of an agenda issue, it seems like.
Okay.
So, it's not, it wasn't on the advertised agenda.
Oh, wasn't advertised, okay.
Didn't realize that until the meeting. We can handle them 21st.
Got you.
Okay. Well, as always, we do the Christmas story at this time, and I think tonight, I think Commissioner Allison, was that who was lined up to read the Christmas story? Mr. McPeters, Commissioner McPeters had done that for several years, and so this year it's going to be Commissioner Allison to read the Christmas story. So, without further ado, we'll allow him to go ahead and do that for us tonight.
All right. We're at Luke chapter two, verse one. "And it came to pass in those days that there went out a decree from Caesar Augustus that all the world should be taxed. And this taxing was first made when Serenius was governor of Syria, and all went to be taxed, everyone into his own city. And Joseph also went up from Galilee out of the city of Nazareth into Judea unto the city of David, which is called Bethlehem, because he was of the house and lineage of David, to be taxed with Mary, his espoused wife, being great with child. And so it was that while they were there, the days were accomplished, that she would, that she should be delivered. And she brought forth her firstborn son, and wrapped him in swaddling clothes, and laid him in a manger, because there was no room for them in the end. And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flock by night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angel said unto them, fear not, for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. For unto you is born this day in the city of David a Savior, which is Christ the Lord. And this shall be a sign unto you: ye shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace, goodwill toward men. And it came to pass, as the angels were gone away from them into heaven, the shepherds said one to another, let us now go even unto Bethlehem, and see this thing which is come to pass, which the Lord hath made known unto us. And they came with haste, and found Mary, and Joseph, and the babe lying in a manger. And when they had seen it, they made known abroad the saying which was told them concerning this child. And all they that heard it wondered at those things which were told them by the shepherds. But Mary kept all these things, and pondered them in her heart. And the shepherds returned glorifying and praising God for all the things that they had heard and seen, as it was told unto them."
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like to say, we're, to all of you that are out there watching us tonight, that I appreciate what God has done for me this past year. I faced some uncertainties early in the year, and God laid His hand, Holy Healing Hand upon me, and I thank you for that tonight. You know, let us never forget what Christmas is about, and let us always thank God for what He has done for us and for the many blessings that He's given us in our lives, because each and every day, we're all blessed in some way, shape, or form. And I'd just like to say tonight, on behalf of not Tony Brown, the commissioner, but Tony Brown and his family, I'd like to say that I wish you a safe, a healthy, prosperous holiday season, and I hope that God blesses you in many ways. And we'll allow the other commissioners to speak as well.
I will say to everybody watching tonight, that I want to wish you and your family a very Merry Christmas from me and my family, and I want to say that it's been a different year. 2020 is the year COVID, and we've seen extreme changes, and we've seen people have to adapt in a lot of different ways. And I want to say that we've learned, I think, to depend more on each other through this, and I want to say that to the good people of McDowell County, keep your chin up, keep moving forward, and this too shall pass, and enjoy Christmas. You may not be able to have the big family get-togethers, which we all love. We all love to eat, we all love to get together, and we love our families, and that might be a little different this year, but just remember, as Chris read, the reason for the season. Celebrate the birth, read the Christmas story, you and the family, get around each other. Just be thankful. I want to say I'm thankful for all of the many blessings that I get to enjoy every day. And so, from my family to yours, Merry Christmas.
From our family, the Vaughn family, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Keep the season about the season that's already been stated. Be safe, and we all hate masks, but if you're going to gather, wear them, because we had 127 new cases that were discovered and notified today. We don't want anyone losing a member of their family over a meal. So, Merry Christmas, enjoy, and be safe.
From my family to yours, I just want to wish you a Merry Christmas, and just ask that we uplift one another in prayer, that we'll just stay safe throughout this Christmas season. So, Merry Christmas, be safe, and Jesus is the reason for the season.
Commissioner.
I'd just like to say, I'm deeply honored and humbled that the county's voted a sin, and the worthiness of trying to make decisions on lives is very stressing in departments of the county. And I know that we're going to be very diligent in trying to look at the best way we can spend monies. And with that, we all need to remember each other. We all need to remember the families that are directly affected by the COVID, or the people that we work with. It's just, it's just a horrible pandemic, and I would love to be able to say in a few more months after the vaccines come out, that our families will be able to get together and celebrate. And from the Ellis family, just love to say Merry Christmas to McDowell County and all the departments, all the hard-working departments, and other people here, so...
Okay. That all being said, again, Merry Christmas to everyone, and do we hear a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Got a motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.